Let's get started here. What we're doing, this is not a formal village council meeting. This is an information session. We have several village council members here tonight. But the purpose of tonight's meeting is to explain the current status of wireless service in Franklin and to understand, so that you understand what's going on and to listen to any comments and concerns that you may have. I've got about five minutes worth of stuff that I want to explain and then we'll open it up to comments and questions. So, and I put this slide up first because this is not what we're going to get. So, we have a couple of these along Telegraph Road, one at fourteen and a half, I'm sorry, one along, one at fourteen and a half in Telegraph, two down toward Franklin and Northwestern. It serves the south and the east sides of our town. There's also, do the next slide please, Susan. There's also, this is called a monopole. You don't see antennas on the top. That's at twelve and a half in Franklin Road, um, in Telegraph Road. That serves again the east side of Franklin. So, in before, 2005, I'm sorry, 2007, these were the main sources of service for wireless in Franklin. We had, in 2005 Verizon came in to us and said, "We'll build you a macro tower like the first one we saw up on the cemetery hill." And we said, "We don't think that fits our aesthetic, no thanks." And, and the issue died at that time. In 2007, I'm, well, I'm sorry, prior to 2007 is what you just saw. But, we had, the council at that time in 2007 was looking for ways to get better service in Franklin and came up, working with carriers, came up with a distributed antenna system. And Susan, you want to do the next slide here? Which has been operating in Franklin since, again, 2007. This is Franklin Road across the street from the post office. The post office is there. If you look way at the top, you'll see a brown canister. That's the extent of the antenna and receiver system for the distributed antenna system that we have in town. Susan, you want to get the next slide, please? We have six nodes like this in Franklin. The green dots, there's one up at Colony Hill and Fourteen, one at Scenic and Wellington, three along Franklin Road, one at Fourteen, one across from the post office, one down just north of Thirteen Mile Road, and then another kind of at River and Wing Lake, I guess it is. Initially, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T established a system with these six nodes. A couple of years later Verizon came in and put poles next to these six and has a separate system, but the receivers and antennas are within a hundred feet of the existing antennas that, that are out there. So, um, so these nodes have worked fairly well and we'll get into a little bit more detail, but in 2015, our planning commission got involved and did a fairly detailed study about cell service. They, they gathered some data. They went to Verizon and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, requested that they figure out a way to improve their service and they didn't get anywhere with them. So, the issue kind of died in 2015. Another significant event in 2018, the Michigan Legislature passed Public Act 365, which was the Small Wireless Communications Facilities Act, which severely limited any municipality's ability to govern or regulate wireless service in their community. The, Franklin's legal authority is limited to having a carrier move a proposed node 75 feet. That's it. That's all our legal authority is today. So, anything that we, changes that we make are things that we have to negotiate with carriers, but we have no legal authority to, to do more than that, so. Then in 2021, Danny Rosenberg started a change.org petition. And those who are not familiar, it's an internet-based petition where you, you put your purpose out there and people can support it or not. And about 200 people, I think you want to, next slide, Susan. About 200 people signed the petition on change.org. You can't see, see it real well because of the light here, but there are red dots that represent at least the people we could identify that signed that petition. So, I just wanted to let you know that we're, that's what we did. When you look at it, it doesn't make a lot of sense because there are places where we have distributed antenna system nodes, but yet they say the service is bad. So, we thought, hey, we got to get into this and understand it better than we do, than a change.org petition would have. But that was the incentive for establishing what we call the Wireless Communications Committee, which consisted of myself, David Goldberg, Pete Halick, Pete's back there, and Mark Hankey. Yes, I didn't see Mark here, and I have Mark here. Okay, so the four of us spent some time trying to figure out, what do we do? How do we figure out wireless service in Franklin? So, we ended up hiring a consulting company called Gunnerson Consulting based in Seattle. And in June of 2021, we spent about $7,000 having them do what they call a drive-through of Franklin. And you want to do the next slide there, Susan? This is the result of the Verizon drive-through. They measured the service of all three carriers. So, to explain this, the top is 14 Mile Road, down the center is Franklin Road, 13 is right across there. So, the green represents the best service, yellow, not so good, orange, worse, red, no service. The white, on this particular one, it was white because the yellow and green were exactly the same amount of hits. So, rather than call it one or the other, they called it white. So, again, this is Verizon. And you, and you look at a lot of green towards Scenic and Wellington where there's a node, a lot of green up at 14 Mile at, at Franklin as well as Colony Hill, some green in the area of River and Wing Lake. So, basically, it told me that the Verizon service isn't that great. You look along the east side, this is all the big towers on Telegraph Road. Again, there's towers south of Franklin along Northwestern. Hard to explain why the service wasn't better there. So, let's show the next one here, Susan. This is, which one was this? Did we say? This must be AT&amp;T. So, the Verizon was on its separate network. Remember, they were a hundred feet from the other six nodes. So, this is one of two carriers on the other nodes. And it, the green shows basically where the nodes are. The system works where there's a node. And show, show the next one here, Susan, too. This is T-Mobile, again, not as good as AT&amp;T, but very similar results because they're using the same system, so. Okay, um, so, what we did then is we went to the carriers and we showed them this data and they were, wow, you guys know what you're talking about. A lot of them, we knew more about their service than they did. But we got their attention. We said, hey, what can we do to improve service in Franklin? Verizon came back and said, "We'll still build that tower on the hill by the cemetery." And we said, "Don't think that fits into Franklin." And that's their current position, is a tower or nothing. AT&amp;T has acknowledged that their service isn't as good as it could be and they are working on a plan to, to present to us to improve service, which would include keeping the six cells that are existing today, upgrading them, and adding three more. Again, I don't know what locations yet, they haven't shared that with us, but those are things that are, that are potentially coming in the future. Lastly, T-Mobile, actually last week, the week before filed an application to put one cell in Franklin. And that one cell would be at Woodside and 13 Mile area. The initial plan we saw showed three cells for T-Mobile. They have told us they've decided to pursue only one cell in Franklin. They are going to put cells along Inkster Road on the Farmington side and one cell up on 14 Mile, Wing Lake area, again, on the Bloomfield side, but, but we have no jurisdiction over those. So, that's kind of where we are. Verizon, I'm sorry, T-Mobile is saying they hope to have their, I think it's a total of six nodes operational by the end of the year. AT&amp;T is saying, we're still in the internal approval process, don't have any timing yet. So, that's, that's what they're up to. So, I think those, there's one more slide there, Susan. So, this is the, again, the Franklin, and we didn't, this with, yeah, what's the term? The different altitudes for, because you want to be high and, and in a central location. So, the green dots, like I said before, are the existing distributed antenna system nodes. This red dot here would have been, or that was the proposal from T-Mobile, it's not going to be put in. And then there's another one, kind of Wellington and Irving, it will not be put in. Then you see four pink dots along the Inkster Road and the one up at the top at Wing Lake. So, that's the proposal. You know, I know there's lots of issues on this with, our service is lousy, or what, what are the health impacts of 5G? And, you know, we're aware of that. We're, we're talking to carriers, again, with our limited authority. They can do basically what, whatever they want to do and we don't have the legal ability to stop them. But again, we, we, we've talked to T-Mobile about potentially moving the 14 and, I'm sorry, 13 and Woodside a little farther away from houses. We'd like to see them at least 150 feet away from any residents. We'd like to see them on poles that are 50 feet high. Today, their poles are 30 feet high. Just moves the potential radiation farther away from people. Just a little side story, I got ahold of a radiation meter a week or so ago and I've been going around town just measuring radiation. And I went back at home and sat down by my computer and I laid the meter down and it went nuts. And I thought, what's going on here? But the wireless router in my house gave me a higher reading than the big towers along Telegraph Road. So, I don't understand it. You know, I did the same thing this afternoon. I laid my cellphone down next to the meter and again, I get very high readings. So, I'm really confused about the, the radiation impacts and what, you know, I've read more than I care to read on this stuff, folks, but we're certainly, again, it's an issue we don't control, but we can use whatever influence we have to both improve service and then do it safely, so. With that, I'll open it to questions or comments. What I ask is that you use the mic if you're going to make a comment because we're videoing this and we want everybody to hear it. And you can either step back there or read this thing, so. Looks like we have a take. Would you identify yourself, please?
Not surprising, Bill. Steve Bancroft, I live in the village. I'm also the administrator for the cemetery. It sounds to me, tell me if I'm wrong, that essentially after two years, the decision is that there's nothing to be done. That T-Mobile is going to do whatever they're going to do, AT&amp;T is going to do whatever they're going to do, whatever it is, which isn't going to satisfy the issues of the Reds in any case, and that there's been a decision made by somebody that we're not going to have, even though they're willing to offer it, there's not going to be an acceptance of a Verizon tower. Even though the cemetery has in the past, and I have talked to the board, parts of the board again, willing to have the tower in the cemetery. So, am I wrong or am I right?
Steve, I think there's a couple of issues there. The, the tower, if we put it in the cemetery, would improve the service that's already good. Once you get away from the cemetery, we still have that same issue of, of poor service. So, it's not as simple as just putting up a tower.
Well, I would say that Verizon came and checked my house, which is in the nasty red area, along Wellington. And they said a tower would satisfy my needs and everyone around me.
Of course they would. That's what they want to do.
Well, I'm-
Right, right. Our consultant tells us differently, Steve.
So, I mean, what I'm hearing is that there's no plan to do anything.
No, that's not true. We can't tell them what to do. We can tell them that their service is poor. Competition does a lot. I'll, I'll bet you when T-Mobile starts putting in stuff and people get wind of it and Verizon loses some business, something may happen there. Again, I can't control that.
Why, what's, why is the decision to deny the tower?
Aesthetics and it doesn't do any good, Steve. Those are, that, those are the two reasons.
We have experts who have told us that the tower will be of no value.
Yeah, no value is not true, but, but there are better ways to provide service in Franklin.
That Verizon will not do.
Right, so they'll-
So, the answer for Verizon customers is that there's nothing to be done?
There's AT&amp;T and T-Mobile.
Verizon said they were willing to try.
Huh?
Verizon said they were willing to try.
Verizon will put the tower up?
Nothing to expect.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm raising the question. I've been told that that is a decision that's been made by the, the village council that we're not going to do, period, under any circumstances.
That's not true, Steve.
Well, that's what I just heard.
It's not, we have, our judgment is it does not-
Beg your pardon?
Our judgment is, is it's not in the best interest of our town to do that. There's better ways to do it, Steve. Is that, okay, my, okay. Okay, I got, we got to limit time here, so, but go ahead, I'll, I'll tell you if you're talking too much.
Rick, David on Wellington Road, I guess I'm in the red zone also. The notice for this meeting said, "No decisions have been made. We want to inform you what we've accomplished." You're telling us now the decision has been made to not let Verizon make a business decision, put a tower, I guess, on a cemetery. You've, you've denied them that opportunity. They're not going to put it there if they don't think it's going to work. If you don't think it's going to work, you, as you said, you, there's a lot, you don't know. I don't know.
You can phrase it that way, sure.
But that's exactly what is happening. Verizon will not do it, put it there unless there's a business reason. And you're saying you won't even let them do it.
Right, right.
So, decisions have been made?
The decision to deny their-
Without knowing what it looks like, without knowing what kind of aesthetic impact it may or may not have, you're denying it.
Right, right, exactly.
Is that what, okay. I don't, other members of the committee may not agree with that.
Bill, nobody's ever officially made that decision. You know that, okay? There is the possibility, a cell tower could be put in downtown Franklin. It is an aesthetic concern that has been raised now for over 12, 15 years in the village. If sentiment has changed and an overwhelming number of villagers feel that it would be better served to have a tower and its aesthetic limitations, then that certainly has never been to a vote of the council. So, please don't want to speak for us that the council's ever done that.
Which, true.
It has been, it has been, in the course of the analyzation and in doing the studies that we've done, the carriers that are using small cell technologies have showed us, if you put in a small cell, you get better service surrounding the small cell. They've also said a macro tower in the center of the village doesn't necessarily guarantee that the whole village gets fixed. It expands out and as we learned from the towers that are surrounding the village, not only does the expansion have limits, the direction that the actual thing sitting on the top of it is facing controls its distance. So, adding a, a macro tower 130 feet in the air in the cemetery can be done. Nobody has officially said that. It has been, again, the village's general position that it is not something that we would feel appropriate and that's how we have proceeded. The other two carriers have said, "We're not really even interested in putting one of those up. We want to expand using small cells." That's exactly how Bloomfield has expanded their cell coverage. They have only large cells along Telegraph Road and at the schools and everywhere else they're using the same type of technology. But if the village wants to start pursuing the concept of a cell tower, then that, we need to hear that because a handful of people saying that it'll help my service has not been consistent with the overwhelming sentiment of villagers historically.
And I guess I would add, I think it's fair to say that 15 years ago, 17 years ago, there was, there was opposition to a tower going in.
And the population of this community has not changed in those last 15 years.
Right, no, I, I total agreement with David, to some extent with the Bill, Bill's statements that, you know, it's not that we closed it. We didn't, we didn't say go for it and invite them in to do it because we don't feel that it's necessarily, we, we want to hear if, you know, it didn't work 15 years ago, there was opposition to it. Generally, historic towns don't put cell towers near their historic villages, you know, but if that's the will of the, the village, I think there'll be receptivity to it. We have ways of getting feedback in, you know, it was a petition that started the, you know, that, it didn't start it because we've been looking at this for many years, but it's, it makes things happen and people need to come to the meetings and make their voice known.
Well, this is the first time I've heard that Verizon indicated it would work.
Right.
By putting a tower there.
They did, they did say that. It's questionable how-
They did say that, but then the county, the committee said, "We don't want that." That's what I mean, that's what I heard from, right, he just said, "Right," he didn't want it. So, they closed off that avenue of exploration and made a decision without a council vote or talking to other citizens. They may want it to have, we want it fixed. How it's done, we don't care.
I don't think we ever, we never told them, no.
He just said, "Right," we did. Bill just said that. He said, the word-
So, perhaps there's-
The quote was right.
You have not come to council, let's be clear.
That's fine, but the committee-
You're putting words in people's mouths right now, Rick.
So, I'm not putting words in, he just said it. It wasn't at the meeting, he just said it to me now. And if the committee has, made a decision, that's fine. Tell us that decision was made by the committee.
I get, I get what you're saying.
That's all. I'm, you're saying it, I'm just responding to what you put out there.
I'm not seeing an application, a new application from Verizon.
I understand, I understand. No, I understand it hasn't come to council or come to anybody.
Just keep doing what you do.
Hi, everybody. I'm Cat Phillips. I live in Woodside at 13. I have T-Mobile. And I can tell you over the last year after this, basically a speed test study was done, that our, oh, can you hear me better? Okay, I'm Cat Phillips. I live at 13 in Woodside and I have T-Mobile. I also was a technology consultant, so I have somewhat of a working knowledge of what's going on here. I can tell you that if these cellular providers see a dime to be made in our city or village, they're going to go for it, okay? Hence the T-Mobile location of the nodes that we're talking about there, where there aren't very many houses and there's not a real call for cellular connection in that quadrant. So, why T-Mobile chose that, why they were directed there, I don't know. But one thing I can tell you is that our village approached the cellular provider. They, they approached the cellular provider, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Verizon to see what they could do. Okay, that's tattamount to saying, how can you blanket our community with 5G or whatever nodes you want to put up or whatever technology is to come, to try and improve our cell service, which I agree is something we need to do, but it's not just cell service, it's internet connection, right? You're all in your houses. I, I'm currently out of power. I can't get on the internet. I have no cellular capability, but I can walk outside my door where there is power and have no problem with my T-Mobile cellphone. So, when I hear all of this information, I think it's really important to synthesize it. Our village approached T-Mobile. There is a huge process. When it comes down to putting into a new tower, there's a whole submission packet. There's a process to go through. I have yet to see a submission packet. I have yet to see any meeting minutes. We have a cellular commission that has no information on the website. I've been surfing our website. I know the cellular committee was created, an advisory board, I don't know, back somewhere in the 2008 range, eight people on it. And it's, you know, gone through various groups of people and things being done and ordinances being changed, but we haven't been privy to any of those things. And that's one thing that I have an issue with, is transparency. But also, as I've looked throughout the entire website, surfing back to 2003, you can do it yourself, you just go on our Franklin Village website and you just put in 5G, do a search, put in cell tower, do a search, do telecommunications, do a search. You're going to find that there's been a lot of activity and really no transparency. And I have a huge problem with that. Because one thing in being a technology consultant is I know a little bit about safety. I've also noticed that in all of the mention of all of this stuff, there has not been one mention about safety. There's a tremendous amount of data available, not only from things around the world and over time, but T-Mobile itself did its own study. So, and that's something that I can provide for you if anybody's interested. I'm going to circulate a signup sheet, so please put your name, email address, and phone number on there. And I'm talking about people who are pro, con, whatever. It's important that we educate ourselves. So, why do I have three minutes? Both of the people ahead of me had more than three minutes. So, I have really important information to share and a couple of questions for you. We would like to see the ordinance changes. We would like to see all the paperwork that you've done with the providers because I can guarantee you there has been paperwork done. These guys have initiated it, but not shared it with us. They're not looking at safety. This is the Mobile Telecommunications and Health document that T-Mobile produced 23 years ago. And let me just share a little bit with you. No technology covering virtually entire countries with its emissions has ever been rolled out as quickly as mobile telecommunications has. At the cellular level, it is possible that there may be direct effects in the EM field on the genetic material which we have collated under the heading gene toxicity. There's a whole section on gene toxicity. We could just keep going. Cognitive function, stress hormones, cancer, health rights and health risks to humans resulting from exposure to electromagnetic fields of mobile telecommunications. Now, I don't know that any of you, this is available to you, just sign the sheet, I will give it to you. This was 23 years ago. So, for people to say there's no safety data, there's plenty. The other thing is Yandit Public Schools just created a lawsuit against the entire city council, the Board of Education, all the, all the people that voted in to have mobile telecommunications mounted on the top of a school. There's plenty we can do as a community, but we're going to have to work together. So, again, I'm circulating a signup sheet. I would encourage you all to sign on it. And I'm not kidding, I am very interested in helping people understand what this is, pro, con, or otherwise, because we have options. The other thing I have noticed is that you haven't studied any other options, other than wireless technology. We have fiber optics coming in, in the very quadrant that you have chosen for our T-Mobile nodes that are useless because no one there wants it and no, there's hardly anybody living there and I happen to be one of them. Fiber optics is going to help us move data. And as you know, well, let me explain wireless, let me explain wireless.
So, what is your point?
My point is-
You're doing a lot of talking, Cat. Can you please get to the point?
Okay, I, you can utilize fiber optics in your home to, with lightning speed, complete reliability. If there's a storm coming through, you can still access internet, you can access your cellphone Wi-Fi in your own house, you can create a hotspot. There's many things and you guys haven't looked into it, so I'm happy to provide the information. How it works for wireless, let me finish. How it works with wireless, let me explain. We've gone from 3G to 4G to 5G and I don't know, you've probably seen the Xfinity commercials about 10G. What happens in wireless capability is it's about data traveling on a wave. So, 5G is a much higher amplitude, it's shorter distance, it's carrying more data. It's also highly unreliable, as you probably all noticed with the storm. And the fact that you can come and go and base- And the fact that you can come and go and based on the different providers, they can all jump on the same pole, which is, increases toxicity. But as far as Wi-Fi goes, as more data is required to move across Wi-Fi, we can't put everything on Wi-Fi. Fiber optics is a, will, is, provides a relief to Wi-Fi so that you can access Wi-Fi much more reliably and more capably.
I interrupt you here, Kat. Explain to us how fiber optics is going to help our cell phones.
Okay.
This is a meeting on cell phones.
No, it really isn't. It's about telecommunications, wireless.
No, this isn't a telecommunications meeting. It's a cellphone. Three carriers in the world that help our cell phone.
Do you know that AT&amp;T is providing fiber? Do you know that why Verizon is also providing fiber?
Kat, we're not getting anywhere.
No, here's the problem. No, where is your safety data? You're telling me, what about cell phones? What about cell phones? I can tell you an awful lot about cell phones, you haven't looked into.
You have many issues that we.
I believe and until we study the safety implications for our village, we need to table this.
Anybody, your cellphone's going to stay slow.
No, your cell phones can be positively impacted by the partnership that exists with fiber. And if anybody needs me to come to your house to help you out with that, I'd more than help you to do that.
Okay. We have talked to, um, Farmington is putting in a whole network of, uh.
We have fiber in a quadrant right here in Franklin.
We do, we do, but we don't have, we don't have the population density to justify. If we want to put five million bucks into it, we can do it. Rick, you want to, go ahead.
A poll gets put in, they send by four providers.
Okay, thanks, Kat. Please.
I'm not here to argue with you. My name is Rick Kozlowski. I live on Woodmore, right up on the hill on the other side of the cemetery. Um, I've been a Verizon customer since before it was Verizon, where they took up the cellphone activity.
It was mine.
Yeah, I'll try to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Mic's not on.
I didn't turn it off.
Yes, have to get close.
All right. Um, my cellphone reception and service is outstanding with Verizon. I don't know where these nodes are, but like I said, I live right on the other side of the cemetery and, uh, them putting a cell tower in the cemetery will do absolutely nothing, as far as I'm concerned. Now, I do understand that there's other issues around the village and I've been in this village long enough to know that those issues have been in existence for many years. In fact, I participated and I believe one of the original cell tower committees back in the early 2000s. And, uh, yes indeed, there was a, uh, a lot of, uh, people that were against building a cellphone tower in the cemetery hill at the time. And, uh, the village and the committees over the period of time and the carriers themselves came up with what I thought was a very reasonable solution at the time. And that's these canisters or this distributed access distributed antenna system that, of course, it didn't affect me at all because my Verizon service was always great wherever I was in the village. But I do understand that there were a lot of people that didn't, uh, didn't have that same experience. And from what I understand, going to this solution certainly provided a lot of relief for people that, uh, didn't have cell service or their cell service was interrupted in certain parts of the village. So I do have a couple of questions relative to the different proposals that were on the table. I, I understand the one made by Verizon, which personally I, I don't, uh, I, I don't accept. But the other ones, is it more of these distributed antenna modes or nodules? Is that what we're talking about here?
We're talking about a technology called small cell, which is similar, but different. With a distributed antenna system, uh, data moves from the antenna, to and from the antenna, uh, to a, a hub. And then from that hub, it gets into the whole network.
Right.
With the, um, small cell, the data moves directly into the, to the network. So you're cutting out a, um.
So would there be actual towers?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I don't know why this has been here.
What do they look like?
Would, would there be actual towers or?
They look exactly like a distributed antenna system.
Okay, so more of the same of what we have now that seem to be a pretty reasonable solution.
Basically, they're stronger now.
Okay.
They call them small cells, so those are distributed antenna systems.
Okay.
They're kind of.
Well, just, just to keep, just to keep my comments, just to keep my comments, uh, limited, and I'm almost up on my three minutes. I would, I would just say, I would favor that solution more than, um, cell towers or cell towers in the cemetery or any other large structures that would interfere with the aesthetic beauty of this village. Thanks a lot for allowing me.
Again, this is the distributed antenna system with the little canister on top and it's not so little when you look at it, it's about five feet high. And the, uh, small cell will look very similar to this. The, some of the equipment hanging on the side will look a little different, but not a whole lot of different, um, in terms of dimensions or aesthetics.
Does that all relate to the other things on there?
Yeah. The boxes on the bottom support the antenna on the top.
Uh, David Solley, um, I am a trustee. I do not sit on the subcommittee, so really just kind of talking as a general participant in the forum. Um, Bill, I think some of the confusion here is in the conversation that we were having, in your presentation at the very end, probably the last three, four minutes, there's a lot of, "We received this proposal, we said no to it. We advocated for this, here's what..." It feels a lot more formulated than what my understanding of the conversation has been thus far. And I sympathize with the lack of understanding by participants here, um, and just general questioning of the transparency because it feels like a lot of decisions have been made that I don't think have. My understanding of what the subcommittee has been doing is very preliminary discussions about, "We have a problem, what are the possible solutions?" And then it was requested to take that conversation, now that we actually have some understanding, to the village to be able to talk about these things. However, my takeaway from that presentation, I think we heard three of four residents speak to it, is it feels a lot more conclusive. So I think we need to be abundantly clear and very factual about, have decisions been made? Where do we stand? What is kind of the path forward? Because I don't believe that we had any awareness that that application was coming in before it actually came in. That was not something that was specifically discussed. And these are the type of things that are extremely important for everybody here to understand, is that it wasn't just us trying to come and throw basically the end result of all this time put in. The other thing is, yes, this issue dates back many years, but it's not a continuation of the dialogue, right? Like, we, we formulated the subcommittee after a resident brought this up, even before I was elected. Um, and so, again, it's not a, "Oh, we were having conversations" or any nefarious intent behind it. It was, "We hear the concern of a resident, so we want to reengage a conversation that frankly has died." And so, again, I think being as factual as we can for everybody to fully understand what is going on is important. The other thing too is, in the last meeting, you know, what I said was, what I would love is for people to come, I'm not in the medical field, I'm not a scientist, and so I can read as many articles on one side of the fence as the other. Um, and frankly, we can get into analysis paralysis on a lot of this. And so if we have more concrete solutions for, "This is how we can find middle ground", I think all of us are open to hearing what it is. But to come up and not have specific points, like, I don't know the difference between the EMFs that are produced by what we're, what we're looking at up there compared to my Wi-Fi router, compared to my cellphone. Like, how do all of these health impacts actually play out from a practical matter on our health? So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Bemis. I live on Wing Lake near Suzanne and, um, I'm probably coming at this from a personal perspective, but, um, I have actually had all three. I've had all three carriers. I had AT&amp;T first, then T-Mobile, now we have Verizon and we finally can talk on our cell phones. So, um, we've been here like four and a half years and, um, I wish I had, you know, the maps ahead of time to know which would be the best option for me. I think that could be really useful for other villagers to kind of look at the map and see what might be the best option for them. I think that's a really great thing you guys did. Um, but interestingly enough, I live very close to the small cell tower for T-Mobile and perhaps AT&amp;T's on there too, I'm not sure. Um, but there's two of them. So there's one right at River and Wing Lake and then around the corner, there's one at Suzanne and River.
One is AT&amp;T and, uh.
And one's T-Mobile?
T-Mobile and the other is Verizon.
Oh, and the other is Verizon, there's three? And so, we didn't really know what they were when they were putting them in, but we walk, you know, around the neighborhood all the time with the kids and everything. And we initially thought something was happening, like an emergency in somebody's house because it was so loud. I thought like an alarm was going off in someone's house when they were up north. And we later found out, this is like permanent, it's, it's just there. And it has like a buzzing noise, um, all the time. So thankfully, it's not in my backyard, but if it were, I mean, I would really be rallying because, um, it's super loud for, for me. I have good hearing, I guess, but it's really a nuisance. Another thing is, it's not that high up. I mean, it's not 50 feet in the air. The poles are just like the power poles and it's 35 feet. Yeah, I was going to say, it's probably 30 feet. And the street adjacent to us, Ramsey, um, has this huge hill and these houses are like up on the hill. And, I mean, the tower is either adjacent to some of their homes or like lower. I mean, they're above. So I just think, um, really my main concern and why I'm following along with this whole thing is I think that we should have some ordinances that the communication companies need to follow, as far as nuisances, the location, height, um, safety regulations. I do think that we should have the control over those things and we should have a say in what they're able to do. Because once a tower is there, other things can be added to it. And so I just am concerned for people that lots of people are on ravines and hills here and we need to make sure that everybody is safe and that people are not just having radiation or, you know, signals going straight into their homes. Um, I, I don't live right next to it, but I live four houses down and, um, T-Mobile didn't even work for us. So we were dropping every single call, I'm not even joking. Um, and we finally switched and we pay more for Verizon, but I mean, it was certainly worth the switch for us. But, um, yeah, so just, I really hope that we can come together and create some sort of ordinances for these companies to follow and certainly address these issues so that we can all communicate and be able to use our cell phones and whatnot.
Just a point on the ordinances in, again, in 2018, Michigan State Public Act 365 was passed, which gave us zero authority to do stuff like that. We cannot, uh, regulate cellphone service.
You know, I, I mean, I guess, I'm not sure, but I know other places like Rochester, I believe, have, have created their own bylaws, um, for the communications companies. So I've seen some things.
We haven't found that. Peter, you've done some research.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have many ordinances about cell service and, but it largely is federal and state. I mean, we're very limited really into what, what we can control them from doing, but I mean, there are some, but we have ordinances on the books now that, you know, are set up to do our best to be in our favor.
Right, to protect our villagers, essentially. But, okay, well, something to consider.
If you look at.
Right, yeah, I don't know, but I'm glad it's somebody else.
I'll make mine, real quick, I'm late to this. These cellphone providers, are they going to pay the village to have these towers? We're paying them?
No. We wish.
Because I know that Knollwood Country Club has a cellphone tower on their premises and they're getting paid a huge amount of money.
The big towers generate.
Huge amount of money, yeah.
Hi, so I'm Danny Rosenberg. I am the resident that started this conversation, probably why we're here, reignited the conversation. It was pretty simple. I moved here five years ago and it was pretty obvious to me. I work from home, I have three little kids. I mean, I'm involved in the community, walking my dog, and there was no cellphone service. So I put together a petition, again, really simple to me, right? Like, democracy and living in a village that there's about 3,000 people or so, that we all really do have a voice. And I heard the voice very loud and clear and it was, "We need better cell reception." That simple, again, right? So started the process, it seems like the process is happening. I've talked to Bill a bunch of times, other members on the council, and it seems like it's going really slow, but it's happening. Um, I, I think there is also, after talking to tons of people in the village, there's a very small minority that are trying to like push things back. Bamboozle, uh, councilwoman and some, a very small minority of people have littered different mailboxes with propaganda to get people to come to different meetings with their agenda. But I think at the end of the day, like, the majority of people in the village and everyone I talk to want safety, yes, we do want safety. That is a big, huge thing, of course, um, but we want better cell reception. And I think the village is really pursuing that and it's going really slow. And I'm just going to leave it there. That's simply what I wanted to share.
Hi, I'm Mary Wright and I live within a thousand feet of the proposed tower at Woodside and 13 Mile and I am concerned about safety as well as aesthetics. Um, I would say that my husband and I were early cellphone adopters and we went with AT&amp;T in the nineties and had horrible service and worked with AT&amp;T. And they were wonderful. They brought a mini tower and put it in the window of our house that we used for many years and we had excellent service. And then when Wi-Fi calling became so popular and so predominant, the, the tower went away and we went on Wi-Fi calling. I'm a walker, I'm an e-biker and I'm a pickleball player. And if I can't get service, I wait 30 seconds until I'm another 500 feet down the road. And that's how I, I deal with the weaker spots that maybe some of you are experiencing now. It's improved vastly in the last five years. I don't know if it's because there are newer towers around us or there's more power in them. I have no idea. I have no problems in my home. I guarantee you, try Wi-Fi calling. I am also with all the new signage, one-way signs to tell us which way to come in and out of wise on 13 Mile. Franklin's changing, it's getting messy and it's going to get messier and why the tower would be at Woodside and 13 when they're proposing one at Inkster and 13, a less than a tenth of a mile from it. I think you should ask these questions of the company, but I would like to hear from the village about what the safety aspects will be if we start putting more towers up.
Rich Perata, 13 and Woodside, also received a letter like Mary. First of all, I want to thank the cellular committee and the council and everyone who's come out. Uh, this has been an issue in the village for a long time, a long time. My request is that we would not look at an expedient solution necessarily that has been presented to us, but think about the things that we want to do for the village. I believe improving cell service is required for what we're doing. But I also know, we live in a beautiful park, we have topography. Who's to say that putting in this amount of cell towers at this level is going to do much? And we won't be back here 18 months from now talking about the fact we need 50, 60, 70-foot cell towers and we start looking like Southfield. So I want to make sure we're not, we're going to be frustrated with the use case when we put these things up and perhaps we have the same, slightly better experience than what we have today. So a couple of requests. One is, I would request that the committee or the council do a safety study for what T-Mobile has proposed. Secondly, I know it was said that based on the 2018 state law, we have no authority or control. Uh, there are exceptions and there are cities and communities that are going back to the cellular providers and saying, "We are going to put these constraints on you." Michigan law, exception or not, and we will negotiate with you so that our community is safe. We also have the opportunity to. to do those things. So again, we have to solve this issue. We have to get better. But if we put a point solution in place today, or the tower on 13 and Inkster, and we're sitting here a year from now, still unsatisfied, then we didn't do our job. And I actually believe, of the work that has been done to date, it's maybe 20% of the work we actually need to do. And we need to do it in a public forum, where there can be a lot of different inputs. Because after all, we are a village. Thank you.
I'm Louis Harris. I live at Wellington and Scenic, supposedly where one of those towers is. So I have two parts, easy, and this is gonna be easy ones, not. So, it was brought up before, but they do make little home wireless internet transmitters. Can we, as a village, like go to these guys and say, "You should be providing, if we don't have towers, we got these dark spots?" Because that does make the solution, at least in your home, and, you know, close by, you know, work, for people that have or in the red zones. Is there anything we can do, or is that an individual fighter?
My sense is they would tell you you need both. We'll go back and ask that.
I mean, because that does solve. I had a Verizon one for my work phone, and that solved a problem.
Is that, that whole transmitter, it has to send a signal to something?
Well, it sends it back over internet. And so grabs it, so whatever, so now you get into your internet. Okay. Yeah, that's, but I think that's an interim solution.
Is that an extender?
No. What it does is it takes, it generates a wifi signal, local to your house, basically broadcasts like a router, takes that wifi signal to your phone, your phone transmits it, goes back into your internet, and then out that way. So it doesn't care about any signal anywhere around the world. It just cares about your internet signal. And that, and those do work.
The voice over internet, that's a crisis.
Correct, but you don't, you don't need digital, sorry.
Question. So, but that's fine for the homes. I mean, I'm in a dead zone over on River Drive, Redford, that they're doing nothing with. We've had two people in the neighborhood almost die because they can't get out with the internet.
Correct, correct. It only...
If our internet's go down...
Correct, Mark, yeah.
I've had two days without internet.
Yeah, me too, me too. Yeah, me too. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it solves all problems. I'm just saying, I'm just saying it solves...
Everybody's internet, AT&amp;T and Comcast.
Yeah, it's, I'm not trying to solve world hunger. I'm just saying that that's a, you know, an interim solution.
Potential way that...
Yeah, potential, potential solution for a lot of people, including me. Next thing is, supposedly, I've got one of those nodes. I live at the corner of Wellington and Scenic, at the corner. It's dead. AT&amp;T is absolutely and utterly dead there.
Because they took the node out about two weeks ago, and they're planning to replace it, and they didn't give it time frame, with the...
Upgrade, or whatever it is. Because it kinda like died last year, remember, had one of the, one of the great storms, it went, and it never came back.
I was out walking one day, and I said, "There's no power either."
Okay. So it's not, it's not me just being grumpy about it. It's actually gone. All right, that's fine. Yeah, I thought it was gone. Thank you very much.
Can you let...
I just want to address what he's saying, real quick. You want to, are you sure? So, sorry, I was just, I'm very emotional about this, but I'm also, I believe, using my head about this. It is really important to understand that if you can employ fiber, okay, you can put a, okay, for anybody who has issues with your cellphone in your home, fiber is a fantastic solution. All it is, is light. It's being emitted through fiber optic tubes. It is, it is weatherproof. It is, no, let me finish. It is future-proof. It is better. So anyone who has issues with their cellphone in their home can very easily access the internet through fiber, even in the midst of a storm. I didn't, I still don't have power. I don't have internet, and I don't have cellphone capability.
We have talked to the company that's putting in fiber optics in Farmington Hills.
We already have fiber right here in Franklin, in the very quadrant that you are aiming for our towers.
Please, let me finish. And we've asked them, can you extend your, through, your fiber optics throughout Franklin? They've said, "You don't have enough business for us."
It's an evolving technology. It will be everywhere. Because...
Eventually it will, no question.
Yes, because as our wifi needs increase, guess where the wifi is gonna be moving across? Fiber. Fiber is literally, it can handle massive amounts of data. It is hack-proof. It is weatherproof, and it is future-proof. And the way to help us with our cellular technology here in Franklin, in our homes in particular, you will have no dropped calls. You will have very reliable service. So as an example, if I had fiber in my home right now, I have a generator, I'd be able to access the internet and my cellular data, no problem, without these additional technologies that were probably increasing EMFs. Just one more thing. The most important thing about fiber is it's clean technology. Well, Mr. Rosenberg, you just insulted a city council member, so I don't know that I'm so interested in listening to your rhetoric.
Norma?
I just want to say that I live at Woodside and 13, and I have excellent phone coverage. I don't need to have a cell power at the end of my block. And I also want to thank the council person for making me aware of this. I have Xfinity, so everybody should get Xfinity. Maybe that'll help. I don't know.
This is horrible.
Couple more here.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, my name is Tony. I've been living in the village now for 26 years. I've heard from multiple people, and a lot of people that live on Woodside don't want it. So why would it go on Woodside when there are all of these other people? And why don't they put it in their backyard?
Hi, my name is Taylor. I live on Hickory Lane. I'm in one of the red zones, where you don't have any service, and I have no issues with service. If I can't make a call, I go on wifi calling to make a call, so it's not a problem. I'm also a nurse practitioner, so I have a lot of knowledge about the safety of these things. And I think we really need to look into the safety issues that could go along with this. Yeah.
Any other council members have any comments?
If we have no control over what the communications companies want to do, then how could we have said no in the cemetery? Is the cemetery an exception to the rest of the law? Is it because it's private property?
The law is the Small Wireless Communications Facilities Act. It only applies to small cells and distributed antenna systems. Right, right. The big ones that, that are on, yeah, I know the schools are having a...
But you have control of the big ones.
Yeah, but, right, right.
Mark Ceso, I've been here all my life, about 66 years. We're worried about the safety. How many people have got Detroit Edison's meters that we were forced to take? And there is nothing to take it off a house. I've talked to electricians, and they all laugh at me. They said, they said, "Did you take it off the house? It's still in the area." And DTE is forcing you to, with that. And it's worse than what these cell towers are giving off.
Take a look at your wireless router. I was shocked when I saw mine.
I live on Wellington, and my phone is, I live on Wellington. My phone is constantly on SOS, which means you have no cells at all. I can only use my phone on the wireless when the wireless works. I've noticed since the last ice storm in March, the service was considerably worse. You seem to be, have an understanding that possibly some of these nodes are in repair right now? Is that...
There's one node.
Okay, that's...
In the vicinity west of...
Is that AT&amp;T? That's what I have. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say one more thing about, just to understand, the macro towers, the big cell towers. They exist in two different ways. There are, some are created by private companies that buy or lease a piece of land, and then they erect the tower, and then they sublease space to the carriers. It is usually those that are third-party privately owned, where all three carriers are on there, because they're trying to maximize revenue, and they lease to all three of them. That's why they coexist there. And again, nobody's ever said no. The only company that's ever approached Franklin and said that they would consider a cell tower is Verizon themselves. If a carrier themselves erected a tower, if Verizon put a cell tower in the cemetery, they wouldn't let T-Mobile and AT&amp;T join on there. So it would be a cell tower that would be for only Verizon. And when we've had our little, whenever we have, get the opportunity of a forum with either AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, they are both, neither of them are interested in the cost associated with erecting a macro tower in Franklin. So theoretically, unless somebody came and wanted to do it as a third-party, and came to us with a plan that said, "Yeah, here, I've got all three carriers on board, and if you just let me put this tower up, we could do it," a cell tower still would only affect one of the three carriers if Verizon put it up. The other carriers don't want to do it. They feel, based upon our, again, if this was Livonia, there are 10 times as many houses in a mile and a half, square mile in Livonia than there are in Franklin. If this was Livonia, and this was a room full of 10 times this number of people saying that they had a problem, it would probably get done a lot quicker than the volume of service here. And then you take all of us, the 2,000 or so of us, and divide that by three. So, in their minds, am I gonna, is AT&amp;T gonna build a cell tower because maybe 800 homes get better service? So they have made the decision, nothing to do with us, nothing to do with us saying, "Come here, go there." They have decided, yes, we agree. Whenever we show them this, the reason we had to spend $7,000 is we said, "Give us your dad," and they said, "Oh, no, we can't give you that. That's private. That's confidential." So then we had to go and spend our own money, and then we handed it to them, and they said, "Ah, you're right." So, the, I hate to say it, but this impression that we have any effect on the process is not true. We have not asked anybody to do anything. We have not submitted an application to anyone.
Phil just said it. It is God.
The only thing Bill said was that...
You approached AT&amp;T. You approached...
We approached them and asked them, "How will you fix our cell service?" AT&amp;T and T-Mobile said, "We will install small cell technology." And that is what they have now gone through the process of doing.
The thing is, if you would just look at options, look at a variety of options.
We haven't done anything. They are doing it on their own. We have not done anything other than tell them, "We have a cellphone problem that we want fixed. How will we fix it?"
Initiating the process. That's what it takes.
So what else were we supposed to do? Not initiate the process? No, we didn't, maybe as if we chose Woodside and 13 Mile as the location for an application.
I think it's time to wrap it up. We're not getting anywhere.
We're gonna go nowhere with you. So how about this? Whatever fiber optics company you represent, why don't you figure out how that's gonna help all of us, and come back to us with an answer?
And represent some FCC knowledge.
Okay. I'm done. I was just trying to add you big people on cell towers.
Ken, I'd love to sit down with you and talk.
We've been on the team for a year and a half, haven't heard a word from you. Haven't heard a word from you.
There...
Haven't heard a word.
There is no big catch of data. You've seen everything.
That's the problem, Bill.
No, just not. Okay. Okay, we got a few more people. One of my comments, go ahead.
Democracy's a little messy, huh? My name's Todd Mong. I live at the corner of Woodside and 13. So I have a pretty simple question. Because the letter I got says, by the way, my wife and I are at the southwest corner of 13 and Woodside. The letter I got says, "The tower," or this little mini tower, whatever it is, is on the southwest corner of 13 and Woodside. Can, do you guys have an exact where, it's going like, I know, I know there's rightaways and stuff, but is it going on our property?
I have the application with me, and David has it, yeah. Again, we saw this for the first time...
You can have it.
Week before last. We didn't know it was coming. And we have talked to them about, "Hey, can you pick another spot?"
And Bill has been working with that to try and get them...
And they haven't said yes or no.
I can give this back to you. My glasses are over here.
Keep in mind, folks, that Public Act 365 gives us zero authority to do this stuff. It's all negotiation, and it's all trying to charm them into doing stuff.
There are cities all over the country stopping...
Because they're not in Michigan. Michigan is different than the rest of the country. Okay. Yes, sir?
Ron Riamey. I live in, on Ravine Drive in Franklin here. And I have terrible cellphone ser, cellphone service. And obviously, many of us have great service, as you can see by the map, the green ones, and the red ones, and the ones that don't exist, like my community. We have, you know, like zero service over there. So obviously, this is something, a typical issue in Franklin, where some people like sewer water, you know, some people like well water, some people like city water. Okay? You know, this is a typical issue. Let me say something about fiber. I just, I just put fiber in my community, a very large community in Florida. And fiber's great for TV, cable, internet. It's not cellphone service, okay? I mean, if, it helps, it helps in your home to have better cellphone service if you're sitting in your home and you're on voice over IP or something like that. It is not your cellphone, okay? It's just a different, much better, much more reliable, higher speed way of implementing what you have, like, like right now with Comcast and so forth. It's not cellphone service, okay? So get that out of your head. As far as towers and so forth, I mean, it'd be nice to solve it in a way that, you know, whether, I don't, I guess, you know, it's never, no one's ever been really happy with a giant cellphone tower. And, but if we can put in the small ones, the small cell technology, you know, regardless of where they go, and there's arguments, you know, you can go back and forth about the safety issues, and most of that's been pretty debunked. Oh, yeah, I know it's, yeah, it is true. It is true. Okay, okay. But anyway, that's an opinion. That's an opinion. Okay, I have a different opinion about it. But anyway, the fact is, is cellphone service is not great in Franklin, and we need to fix it the best way that we can. All right? That's all. And fiber's not gonna do it, by the way.
You can come up here. I have so much to say. I have to figure out which point.
Identify yourself, please.
I'm Cindy. I live on Wing Lake, on Suzanne. I have great cellphone service. I have Verizon. I have never had a dropped call in my life, walking or driving around this entire place. To that point, I guess, it sounds like these maps are not necessarily reflective of everyone's service, because some people live in the dead zones and have great service, and some people don't and don't have great service. So I just think a different approach to this, to getting real people's feedback and insight, doing a village survey and seeing who your provider is, and how you would rate your service, even in and just around your home. Then we can really target the problems, because all I hear over and over is, obviously, we want to fix the cellphone problems. I'm not against that whatsoever. But we need to do it in a smart way. A lot of these people, like, Danny, you live as close to the nodes now as you will when the new ones go up. Like, how is that gonna solve your problem? Are there any guarantees that these companies have made as far as, like, distance and coverage and what they can guarantee?
That's not true.
It really is.
No, don't put another one in on River Drive. They'll have to, they'll have to put another one on River Drive because the demographics...
Okay, this is like 50, 100 feet we're talking about.
That impacts...
It just, it just seems like we, I understand that there isn't all that much that we can do, and I understand from like a regulation perspective, that we, we're at...
Let's let Cindy talk, okay?
We're at where we're at, in, to a certain degree. And I think that going forward, though, let's make some, some more concrete, knowable decisions here, based on what everybody's saying. Because all I'm getting is that, like, any of the information that we currently have isn't truly reflective of what's going on in the village, and isn't taking into account everybody's service, service provider, or concerns. It just feels like we got too far down the path with where we are now. And again, like, maybe we're... maybe we're stuck, but on a go-forward, I think that we can approach this from a more tactical perspective, and then really get to the solutions, because we don't want to be back here every year having these conversations and having these debates. And then to the safety perspective... They should, no, and I think that's what other neighbors have said, I think that's what this map even might serve to provide, is like, there are solutions that you can take to solve these problems on your own. There are cell boosters that you can have in your house, different from Wi-Fi, these are different technologies. You can do a Wi-Fi booster and then do, rely on your Wi-Fi calling. It also creates a small network around your home. It has a pretty large, almost like 3,000 square foot range. You can get two of them. You can switch providers. There are a lot of technologies. You can have a landline, if you really want to get to safety. Like, you can do all these things, like, the good thing about technology is that it is so advanced, that there are solutions to pretty much all of these problems at your fingertips, that you could solve today, you could solve tomorrow, so as we then maybe figure out the larger problem at hand. But to safety regulations, just very quickly, and I've said this, and probably many of you have heard this, but about 20, no, went with it, the Supreme Court did rule against the FCC that they did not have enough proof that their regulations were safe. The last time safety regulations were put in place was almost 30 years ago. Now, we know technology has changed tremendously, so even at a base level, there's nobody in this room that can say, "Yes, those safety regulations reflect all the 30 years of change in technology that we face today." I'm not claiming anything one way or the other, but we do know that RF exposure, the radio frequency exposure, is no good. The longer you're exposed, the worse it is. The closer you are to the strength of the signal, the worse it is. On a very base level, that's what we know. So as far as restrictions go, we're just pushing for, okay, yes, higher towers, right? As far away from residential areas as we can, and it's going to take us as a community working together, solving these problems with technology in your home, and then getting true data to solve them in a tactical way for the village going forward.
Thank you, Cindy. And Michael.
Cindy? Okay. So I'm, I'm Michael Salzer, I'm a member of the, oh, I'm sorry, were you waiting to speak? Come on up.
Thank you.
All right, so my name is Salmon, I go by Salmon. Official name is Truian Toh, I'm one of the neurosurgeons at the DMC, so, and I live the white house above the hill that everybody hates, because our builder torn down the trees, but they torn it down before we got, before we bought the house, so I just wanted to disclose that. You know, so this is a question that I come across all the time, you know, I want to tell you guys, because, you know, I am a brain surgeon, all right? I do spine surgery as well, and I do aneurysm surgeries and strokes. People often come to me and ask, you know, does cellphone use have anything to do with brain tumors? And I can tell you all the data that's out there, we've done all this research, and I can also tell you exactly, you know, people say, you know, certain scans are safe, you know, we're exposed to radiations all the time. However, you know, what you don't see is just certain side effects, I can tell you. Rates of brain tumors are going up the roof, you know? How much brain tumors are we seeing every day compared to 30 years ago? You know, it's exponentially higher. Rates of GPM, glioblastoma, you know? The most common forms of brain tumor that nobody knows what the cause is, is through the roof right now, and much higher now than it used to be. What changed? Well, you know, technology has changed, food probably have changed, you know? So there are so many things. There hasn't been any Level 1 data to show that radiation causes brain tumor, but what I can tell you is that, that radiation does induce DNA damages, and over time, little accumulation effects, you know, would cause that, just like, you know, people, you know, fall, they hit their head, they get a CAT scan. Well, guess what? Every single CAT scan of the head is roughly about 450 x-rays worth of radiation. If you're sitting in a hospital for a week because you have an unstable bleed, you got three or four CAT scans, and two months later, people lose their hair. So we do see that. So, you know, from that perspective, I want you guys to know that, you know, the quote-quote "safety" thing, you know, we are thinking about, you know, stuff, you know, for our kids, you know? I have a four-year-old, two-year-old, and a seven-month-old, you know? Yes, they may not get in trouble the next 10 years, 15 years, but what about 20, 30, 40 years? Nobody knows those, you know? We don't have 5G back then, you know? I'm on call all the time. If I don't answer the call, somebody dies, all right? So what is my solution? Well, I have Wi-Fi at home, you know, so from Xfinity, and usually that give me great service while I'm inside the house. Phone call always goes through, I may not be able to browse Internet when the power's out, when Xfinity is out, but I can at least make one phone call. So I think that, you know, my solution, at least for my house, is, you know, I would just hook it up to the Internet while I'm at home, you know, people can get to me. If they really need me, they call me on the phone. I may not be able to get an iMessage through sometimes, you know, but I can always get a phone call through. I don't think that our cellphone signal is bad enough that we're not having phone calls, but I think that we're having trouble with getting broadband data while, you know, services are down. And usually, if there's no problem with the Internet or with power, you know, people are getting enough signals. Do I need 5G to cover the entire house? Well, I think that my Wi-Fi signal is better than 5G in terms of speed. So personally, I can tell you, if you guys put a cellphone tower, as a evidence-based brain surgeon in the community, I would move, so, you know? And I would not recommend my patients to live within, anywhere within one mile of a cellphone tower. I just, you know, sorry, you know, we don't know enough. If you guys are willing to be the guinea pig, I'm sorry, you know? When you get a brain tumor, my office is at Harper.
The people that really control this are the carriers, and you're their customers. And if you're not happy with what they're doing, call them and tell them that. They listen to that far more than they listen to a bunch of elected officials. So I would urge you to, to call them, express your issues. The state law is, people like Jeremy Moss and Sam Steckloff, that are Rep. and our Senator, tell them you don't like what we have, and, and maybe they'll, they'll do something, so... Yes?
I just have a question.
Get up to the mic, please, so we can hear you.
I just have a question. The four towers on Inxter, are they the same provider?
Yes, they're all, that's a T-Mobile proposal.
They're all, they're all T-Mobile?
Yes.
And why do they need four, just so many?
That's, they have done engineering studies and said, "We need four."
I would like to know...
My sense is that, that they're, they're covering more than just the houses along there, they're covering traffic along Inxter Road, and, and they need increased capacity. That's my guess, I don't know that it's true.
More what it's about. They don't care as much that you lose a call in your house as much as people complaining that when they go through the hill, that the call gets dropped, so, yeah, that's...
So there's 30 seconds of, of no talking?
Correct, and that's what they're...
They don't want that.
No, 30 seconds of no talk.
A lot of us can tolerate that, they don't want that.
So I think that, again, with a safety issue, but also, so many towers along Inxter like that, it's just not fair to the people that live there. And I'd like to know, how many people between 13 Mile or even as far down as 12 Mile to 14 on Inxter don't have service? I'd like to know, how many of those people don't have service?
We can, we can certainly find that information, but that's only a small part of the issue.
Maybe we should have a questionnaire, it could be done on Internet. I don't care, to save money, and, and we could just answer which households have service and which don't, and maybe the ones that don't should switch providers. Or if they have T-Mobile and have no service, I could come with my Verizon phone and see if it works in their house.
Works in their house, yeah. Okay, appreciate your comment. Let's, okay, okay. Let's, one more comment here, and then we'll wrap it up.
My name is Beth. I live in the historic district, I've lived here for 13 and a half years. Sorry, I hate speaking in front of people. I was sitting here thinking a lot of the exact same things that Sam was, it came up to say, and thank you for speaking about that. You know, Franklin is the town that time forgot. We moved here because we like trees, we like nature, we don't like to see big things. I don't, I walk my dogs every day, and I drop my Spotify, I drop my calls. What did we do back in the day when we didn't have cellphones? Oh my God, you had to wait until you got home to make a phone call. Like, my service is pretty good. I'm on consumer cellular, because I'm on my parents' plan for family reasons. Had a hard time getting back on it after the snowstorms, but, you know, you kind of deal with it. Back in the day, in the 1950s and 60s, when everybody thought, "Oh, we have gas for our cars, and we can go out west," and we didn't realize what kind of pollution we were putting out into the world. We don't know what we're doing with all this radiation yet. I'm so glad that Sam brought up the point about, I'm a nurse, and I, you know, they come and do x-rays on my floor, and I run the other way, because the more you are exposed to it, it's going to build up in your system. We don't know what 5G is going to do to us in 30 or 40 years, just like we didn't know we were going to do that much damage to the atmosphere when we drove our cars everywhere. And now we know, what do we do? We're trying to mitigate and backtrack on all the pollution that we put out, and use less fossil fuels, and now we know. So I think it just behooves us to do as much research as we can for a safety aspect of it, as well as, you know, everybody wants what they want. Starting what, the end of the week, Michigan's going to have a no-hands law in our cars, not driving on your car, do you really need to be on phone call in your car the entire time? If you're driving down the road and you drop a call, you shouldn't be on a phone call anyway. I almost get hits every day with people coming, careening around the corner, not looking for pedestrians, with those stupid Teslas, with, it looks like an iPad, and they're staring at it, driving down the road. Get off your phone if you're in your car. It doesn't matter, you should be driving your car. Who cares if your call drops? You shouldn't be on a phone call anyway. I just, I mean, that's just like my safety perspective of it as well. I mean, get out there and live a life, and stay off your phone if you have to be on cell service 24/7. There's something wrong with your life. So, thank you, you know, I really just, and I think there's got to be, and I missed the first part of the meeting, I'm sorry, there's got to be something that we can do to tell these companies what we want in our community. Because, no, I don't want to live in a place like Livonia that has towers everywhere. I don't want to live in Birmingham, where it's like, super-populated and developed downtown. I like it quaint, and I don't need that many cell towers everywhere. I'm good in my house, and I think there are solutions that you can put in your home, if it's really a problem in your home, that you have more control over what you're exposed to, instead of these big companies coming in and for profit, saying what we need to have, and that's how they're going to do it, because that's what it comes down to, more profit for them. They're not thinking about our safety. We have to think about our own safety. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm for Rick.
Thanks, Bill. I just want to address a fact, people talk about it being a convenience factor, having cellphones. It's a health factor for many of us in our homes, if we can't communicate. Talked about the ice storm, no power, the cable went out, no Internet, my carbon monoxide alarm goes on. I can't make a call to call for help. If I stayed in that place, because I cannot, cannot reach anyone, I had to get in the car and drive out of, out of the city center here to make a call, because there was no cell service. This afternoon, Edison was out looking around my house, because the power's out. They tried to communicate on their cell to call the engineering department to locate where the outage was, they cannot communicate, there's no cell service. These are public safety issues, personal safety issues, not a convenience factor. So those of you that say, "Change providers," I've got all the techniques, I got the VoIP, I got the cell tower, the mini-tower, when the power's out and the cable's out, there's nothing there. And so it's personal safety, why, why, I'm supportive of whatever change we can do to make this thing better for us. They've done the studies, there are certain areas in this community that have no service from any provider. That's a health problem. It's a health and safety issue that we don't think about in this modern age, because we got all these techni, all these technologies, but it comes down to it, we can't communicate and call for help, health, health and safety. That's what the bottom line for me.
Thank you. Again, thanks. I wish I could answer all the technical questions, but it's, it's, yeah, it's, okay. Again, thanks for coming out tonight. We hear what you're saying, and we'll, we'll continue pursuing the, the right thing here, so... Okay. The village council will discuss this in a meeting. This, again, this is not a village council meeting, this is just information, so...